And welcome everybody to the Andrew Cooper Rider Show. Of course, I'm your host, Andrew Cooper Rider. Thank you for tuning in to what is the most important political show you'll listen to? Why? Well, we talk about state and local level issues, issues you can actually make a difference about. While I understand listening to those podcasts that talk about federal issues is very exciting. The fact of the matter is, is these issues that we talk about are issues that you can address, that through hard work and, and through making calls and advocacy within your own community, you can make a large impact. And so every day we roll out top political stories and headlines, most of which you're probably unaware of. And we do this with a constitutional and conservative perspective. Remember, all politics is local and you can make a difference. And today's show will be following up on a story I started talking about yesterday, speaking of making a difference. Here's an opportunity, the appointment of supposed Republican Julie Pyle to the State Board of Education. I started talking about that yesterday. We're going to talk a little bit more about that today. And the reason why I just said supposed Republican, then we'll discuss the involvement of longtime McConnell ally Terry Carmack in the Cameron campaign and ask the question of that is his involvement in the campaign being made to look like more than it is? Does it mean Cameron's involved with McConnell a whole lot more than what Cameron said while he was running in the primary? Or is it simply something else that we will talk about? It was Breonna Taylor's, what would have been, I guess, Breonna Taylor's 30th birthday yesterday, which caused racial activists, both local and national, to decide to launch their campaign against Daniel Cameron seeking the governorship? While this is incredibly sort of ironic for these Black Lives Matter activists to be deciding to get involved in a campaign against a black politician in support of a white cis male. Well, that may be ironic. We'll, we'll kind of cover that and talk about what they said and what we can expect that to affect the rest of the, the, the campaign season for Cameron. Finally, a Hopkinsville electric vehicle battery plant has had some of its economic incentives paused here in Kentucky. The state demands an explanation for why it was turned down for $200 million loan. We'll have all those stories and so much more here today on the Andrew Cooper Rider Show. And kicking us off, going back to this Julie Pyle story. So if you remember yesterday, I talked about Julie Pyle getting appointed to one of the two vacant state school board seats. That board of 11 people had two vacant seats for over a year now. And this, this woman got put in there. Well, you know, I talked yesterday about, is she really conservative? Is she not? We will find out as we dig into it. Well, we certainly have found out that Julie Pyle is not maybe as conservative as she may purport to be. So when Julie Pyle ran, was on the school board in Boone County. She actually lost in that school board race in her bid for reelection. She was rejected and she lost against a conservative candidate. That's right. So she, this Republican, uh, school board member, Republican in quotations, um, lost to a person coming out with a more conservative viewpoint, pointing out some of her, her points that weren't very conservative. However, that's not the most alarming thing necessarily about it. Um, it's her support for this. So Julie, uh, shared out and retweeted out a article and her cash on this article was, this is a really good article that my friend and the education trust fellow colleague, Penny Christian shared. Please take the time to really read and digest it. Now, let me tell you what this article is called. This article is called the reopen schools now debate is rooted in racism. That's right. During COVID, Julie Pyle shared out this article with a resounding endorsement saying, read it and ingest it. Uh, when this article was saying that not only should schools not be reopened, one of the things that we know damaged our children's education the most, these schools being closed greatly, greatly damaged our children. And we see the reverberations of that continue to this day. But on top of that as well, she pushed out this idea that us even talking about it was somehow rooted in racism. And of course, I'm not going to go into a giant and, and large tirade on how crazy this is, on how crazy the idea was that me or you wanting your children to go back to school was somehow rooted in, in racism, absolutely out of control, especially considering the fact that, that the kids who suffered the most were children in the lower income or in this, in, in the inner cities there. They were shown to have suffered the most. They've shown to have fallen the most due to school closures, but yet somehow reopening is, is somehow rooted in racism. Or to say it another way, and there's people too, that argued that wanting to reopen means you're trying to go at the lower socioeconomic class. They somehow contorted it despite the fact that individuals who are in two-parent households that have incomes tend to be in a better off situation, probably has more involved parents in single parent households where the parents working and most certainly the children in a single parent household where the parents working while the child is having to log into a computer and somehow learn on their own was certainly being damaged the most. But this Julie Pyle, she pushed out this incredible lie, saying that this was, well, this was rooted in racism. Well, not to, not to just let her languish. What can you do about this? Because clearly this is not a good representative of a conservative viewpoint. Um, this is not somebody who's going to push out the idea that schools should have been closed during lockdowns, somebody who can even begin to entertain this idea that wanting to, the schools open during lockdowns meant you were racist? This kind of craziness, this doesn't need to be representing the Republican viewpoint. Remember, this person's supposed to be a conservative on our school board. And so what can you do? Well, you can sign this petition being put out by Commonwealth Educational Opportunities. Uh, this is a, a advocacy group that advocates for, um, educational change to a conservative side of things, wanting educational choice and, and the chance for everybody to have a fantastic education while at the same time making sure that, that schools are actually teaching kids. Um, and Commonwealth Educational Opportunities has put out a petition to tell the state senate, um, who has to confirm this appointment, tell, uh, stivers and, and the rest of the state senators to not approve this person's appointment. So one, call up your local state center, whoever that may be, and tell them, do not approve Julie Pyle. Do not approve Ms. Pyle to the state board of education. This is an appointment that has to be approved by the legislature, pointing out that Beshear is turning this into a political situation. And then also as well, you can sign the petition at C E O K Y dot org. That's C E O K Y dot org. You can go there. Um, you'll go to their petition dropdown menu. You'll see petitions and you'll see one called deny Beshear's pick there. And you will go ahead, click that, it'll take you to the petition and, and that clearly articulates that Kentucky deserves, that conservatives deserve somebody who represents them on this board, somebody who represents our values. And one of those values that conservatives had certainly during COVID was that, uh, we needed to reopen our schools and certainly asking for schools to be reopened wasn't racist. And you are back with the Andrew Cooper Rider Show. Of course, your source for constitutional and conservative talk and news from a, a perspective here that's focused on state and local level issues. And in this portion, we're talking about McConnell Chief of Staff, Terry Carmack joins the Cameron campaign in his senior position. It's important to understand I'm saying senior position, uh, because I believe Politico wrongly reported he was joining as campaign manager. He is not joining as campaign manager, but he is joining the campaign in a senior level position. And why does this matter? Well, first, let's talk about who Terry Carmack is. He's a former, uh, chair of the state party. Um, he has served as chief of staff on several congressional places as well. He was McConnell's state director, and now he is McConnell's chief of staff. And certainly that can be alarming to some people. We know that all during the primary campaign, and we even saw Kelly Kraft hitting Cameron on this, that Cameron was too tied into McConnell. I personally know many a people who directly asked Cameron, are you tied in too much with McConnell? And because it does put out a question, because if Beshear loses and Cameron takes over, it is likely that the governor there will end up replacing McConnell's replacement. And, and the reason why I say that is because Beshear, um, if Beshear wins, McConnell's not going to step down. It'll go to an open seat election, most likely. The way the law, as I've covered in prior, uh, shows there, the way the law was changed a little bit ago and made it to where the party of whoever, so if Senator steps down or passes away while in, in office or congressman, um, the, the party of which they belong to puts forward three choices and the governor has to pick from one of those three. Now, if McConnell's relying on Beshear to make a selection, he may not step down or Beshear may drag his feet and making the selection so to the point that, um, you know, he, until he gets somebody he wants to, or he's going to try to sue on that law as, as, you know, he's already tried to do, saying that it is unconstitutional somehow and, and a violation of the governor's powers. Point is, is that what, what McConnell wants is somebody to take over that then will hand a, a point that will appoint McConnell's handpick replacement. I think that's key to understand. The most McConnell thing to do in the world is to handpick your replacement. You don't want it to go to an open seat election. So that's why is, is, is Cameron too tied into McConnell has become such an issue during the primary was because of the concern that then now McConnell gets to handpick his replacement in the senate and that can affect us for decades and decades and decades, as we've seen with McConnell, who's been in there for decades and decades. And that's why some intent go up. When you see somebody like Terry Carmack getting appointed or, or, or working on the Cameron campaign like this, uh, and it causes people to ask questions about how tied in is Cameron with McConnell? Now, the easy thing to say here is, look, Cameron got a lot of donations, uh, from McConnell people, McConnell connected people during the campaign, and now he's working with this McConnell guy. McConnell's come out and endorsed this race. You know, clearly you could say, a person could claim, well, Cameron clearly is McConnell guy. We've been duped. That is a claim people can make. And by can, I don't necessarily mean it's true. And I also think it's not realizing the political reality of the situation. First off, Cameron has, did work for McConnell for a little bit of time. So naturally connections that Cameron has made, uh, while working for McConnell would have been made by people who also worked with, uh, or around McConnell. So it does make sense that they would share some donors even outside that. And I know a lot of people, uh, that we want there to be conspiracy and I hear you. And, and a lot of times what I've learned, and I'm saying this as somebody who's ran for office all across, I ran statewide, I've run for the state senate. I'm saying this is somebody who's been a political insider and I am telling you this, and I mean this in the nicest way, they are not that smart. Nobody is this smart. Nobody is this scheming. Things just happen to happen. And there's a lot of times connections like this where, yeah, Cameron worked for McConnell. He did. But because he worked there, he got some, some phone numbers and connections, uh, that happened to align with the same people that sometimes support McConnell because he was there and that's where he picked that up from. That makes some sense. Um, but now we're talking about Terry Carmack coming on board. And once again, uh, this is where my experience running in politics tells me something really important. And that is, there is a desert of talent when it comes to campaigns. What do I mean by that? Well, what, what I mean is, is that there is not a lot of people who can operate at a high level on a statewide campaign. There's not a lot of people who can operate locally on campaigns. There is maybe five or six, uh, seven, maybe well-known, um, you know, consultants even across the state that will work on these kinds of state level campaigns. And it leaves a, a desert of talent where people like, we saw this with the Kraft campaign. What'd she have to do? Well, she had to go out and hire, uh, out of state national firms to come in and run her campaign in Kentucky. And part of the issue that is, and, and I've seen this, and I've seen this dealing with, I mean, in campaigns, I've beat some of these consultants, some of these national firms that, that are losing touch or out of touch with the Kentucky people. I've seen how they operate. They all operate the same way, but they have no idea who the major players are. They have no idea that geography on a state they miss out on, that you can't accurately direct a statewide campaign, uh, and be a part of that management. If you don't know, um, where some of these places are, who some of the players are there, uh, who do you need to talk to? That is something that of course I know, or other political people who are involved, especially statewide, they know who all the players are. Um, but that is not something these out of state national firms have. There is a very, very short list of people with those expertise. And Terry Carmack is somebody who has those expertise. And also at the same time, make no mistake, um, McConnell and people like him, the establishment people, they're going to come in behind Cameron and you're going to be supporting the same people as him if you're conservative, if you're Republican. And the reason why you end up doing that is because, uh, the same reason that they come in. Now for them, it can sometimes just be about team R versus team D. For us, it's, it's more about policies. It's more about, uh, what you actually stand for. Um, that can be really, that's, that's actually hard a lot of times for people like the, the quote unquote McConnellites to understand, um, because they are mostly team red shirt versus team blue shirt. Um, they want a person in control that, that they feel is on their same team. They would rather, uh, um, that, that is what they care about. They don't necessarily care about ideology. Where does a person stand? When, when somebody comes in to, to somebody like the McConnell crowd or that kind of group, that the, once again, the McConnellites, uh, as we call them in political circles, they're asking questions like, is this, can this person win right away? That's our first question. How winnable are they? Oh, how do they fulfill our other needs, uh, as far as helping us win in more places? They're not asking questions like, is this person even a conservative in the first place? They don't care. Now we do. That's why we had to be involved in primaries. But then after primaries, you're going to see the establishment characters, everybody coming behind whatever candidate you have at these highest levels, whether it's presidential, whether it's governor. I mean, you saw this in 2016 with the presidential election, uh, the same people that were throwing attacks at Trump then come in and support him after the primaries because there's a quote unquote greater enemy. And in this case, and in their minds, especially the McConnell camps minds, they know that they can't work with Beshear. They know that McConnell, um, won't be able to have a hope of stepping down at all because they have a Democrat governor and that's going to fight them in court and nothing is for sure. Um, and so it, no matter who you are, whether it's me or you or anybody else, you've got a reason to want to see Beshear lose. And, and that means you've, you're supporting Cameron to win. So maybe it's a selfish thing. Maybe it's got nothing to do with Cameron's past involvement with McConnell. Maybe it's just to do with the fact that there's not a lot of people to choose from in order to fulfill these important campaign positions, people who understand the lay of the land, as I covered earlier. Or maybe it is that Cameron is just full on still controlled by McConnell. Though I am dubious necessarily of that claim to a degree. Um, clearly there is somebody, you know, when you, when you watched that primary election, um, rumors swirled about who was McConnell supporting? Was he supporting Kraft? Was he supporting Quarles? Was he supporting Cameron? He didn't really come out and say, uh, straight up who he was supporting in the race. Maybe he wasn't supporting anybody at all, hoping that one of the top three he could work with in order to work towards this whole replacement side, getting him replaced. Regardless, we're seeing the leftist media jump on this appointment, making it, uh, of course, trying to tie Cameron to McConnell because he is so unlike by a lot of people. And I wouldn't be shocked at all if you see the Beshear camp, um, and, and others to start to attack Cameron on that type of issue, to start to attack him on his ties, uh, to camera, to McConnell in the past, and even bringing up things like this appointment here. In this segment, we're talking about the Breonna Taylor supporters launch campaign against GOP gubernatorial nominee in Kentucky. Now, this is really ironic. Okay. So what we have going on is, is Breonna Taylor's mother, um, a local group, and then a national group out of, uh, New York coming in and saying they're going to open up offices, one in Louisville, one in Lexington, to go out, engage voters and try to turn people out for Beshear. Against Cameron, a white cis man, Beshear, uh, these people are supporting against Cameron, a black man, the social justice movement. Because nothing screams social justice like, uh, working against a minority running for office. Um, but you know, that's, that's the world we live in now. Uh, we live in a pair, a world that is a parody of itself. Now, of course, they're working against him because they're very upset that Daniel Cameron did not, uh, decide to indict the officers involved in the Breonna Taylor incident, the officers themselves. And, um, you know, this is something that I think people really need to understand. I, I think Cameron really showed through in that instance, he really showed through, um, his commitment to, to law above all else. And, and maybe you're somebody, um, who, who doesn't understand what I'm saying. So understand this, uh, the Breonna Taylor incident, obviously a horrible, awful thing. Um, you had a situation where officers, uh, were executing a warrant they were given, a no-knock warrant they were given. And in doing so, uh, coming into the home came under fire from Breonna Taylor's, uh, boyfriend. And Breonna Taylor's boyfriend started shooting the officers, the officer started shooting back and they struck and killed Breonna Taylor. Absolutely horrific incident, to say the least. And regardless of how you feel about no-knock warrants and personally, I'm not a big fan. I don't like putting our officers in positions where they can be legally shot at. That's just my humble opinion. Um, but I, I think when we're putting officers in a position, and we've seen this in several states as well, not just Kentucky. We've seen this in a lot of other states where individuals, uh, they've been executing these no-knock warrants officers have, they come in and the person they're executing the warrant on starts shooting at them and has even, uh, struck and killed officers before. In fact, um, in, in one of the southern states, I believe Alabama or Georgia, there was an execution of a no-knock warrant done by police officers. Um, the person was guilty. They were guilty of a very serious crime, I believe murder, um, elsewhere. They were guilty of it, but yet while they were found guilty of the very serious crime that they committed, they were not found guilty of firing at officers that executed the no-knock warrant. And so that tells me I support our officers. I don't want to be seeing them in a position where they can be legally shot at, especially in position where they can be legally shot at, then they shoot back and now are facing indictment for somehow executing, um, or possible indictment for, for this. And, and so they're really upset that Daniel Cameron didn't come out and prosecute, uh, those officers involved. In fact, the only thing that came about was a, uh, I believe a want endangerment charge, um, for one officer who blindly fired into an apartment, uh, the apartment next door. He was acquitted of that too later on. Adding credence too, to Daniel Cameron saying, look, I didn't believe our office could even get a conviction because they, it was really hard to see how they were guilty necessarily. It was a horrible incident, but it's hard to see that they were guilty. And, and so therefore it is a difficult situation. I don't think we can prosecute. That was made evident because the officer charged with want endangerment also, uh, was not, he was not convicted either. He was found, he was acquitted. So it does add a lot of credence to Cameron's statement. While he was running in his primary, he certainly stood up and said, he used that situation, the Breonna Taylor situation to say, look, I have stood up when it was hard. I've had people protesting on my lawn and I stood up for what was right. And because of that, because I stood up for what was right is why you should vote for me. But of course, this group here is very, very upset about it. Um, in fact, they are, are this, this social justice group is, is full on going in almost, almost doing something that you would never expect, uh, any of these people to do. Supporting a white cis man, once again, against a black man. Um, but a lot of that is because it's not actually, um, about, it's not actually about racial issues per se. It's about a greater cause for most of these groups. And they know what that greater cause is. Because what they actually stand for, while they may claim to be standing for racial justice, what they actually are standing for is far left liberal ideas and forwarding that agenda. You see, everybody's a victim based upon their skin color until somebody with a skin color that's supposed to be a victim says, uh, something they don't agree with, or holds a viewpoint that they don't agree with. Now, this person is no longer a victim. In fact, this is somebody who has to be stopped. Earlier, uh, this week, we talked about the awful horrible Joe Girth article, uh, where he espouses the same kind of garbage that we hear, um, from these people, that Cameron somehow, because he's a conservative, is not really a black man. That is what they espouse. How are they going to do? What are they going to do? What do they say they're going to do? Well, they're going to open up offices here soon in Lexington and Louisville, and they're going to engage with a group of voters that don't often turn out. Clearly they're going to try to do a get out the vote efforts and pushes. This certainly means that conservatives and Republicans are going to also need to step up their get out the vote pushes if they're going to compete with this kind of action. Um, because this is the very thing when it came to electing Cameron. When I was asked before, uh, when Cameron was running in the primary and they said, do you think Cameron can win in general? I said, look, Cameron's going to electrify groups across the nation in a way no other candidate would in the general election because of the Breonna Taylor thing. Because groups like this will come in and ironically, Black Lives Matter groups will be working against a black candidate. Um, so they're going to be working these neighborhoods. They're going to canvass neighborhoods, they say. They're going to operate phone banks. Um, they're going to reach out to voters who don't normally vote and, and try to get them to turn out and go, uh, against Cameron. Incredibly interesting. I don't know how this is going to turn out. I don't know if this kind of national coordination will really push people out to vote. I think a lot of people already know who Daniel Cameron is, but it, once again, if Republicans don't start running their own get out the vote campaigns, if Republicans don't come in like this, if national groups don't get formed that come in to deal with these situations in order to turn out the vote and go to battle, go to war with these kinds of communistic groups, and it is communism, that aren't really, they, they don't believe in racial change. They did, they'd be supporting Cameron. They believe in change that, in this communistic liberal change. That's what they believe in. And that we've got to be getting out the vote and fighting against that. Well, um, microvast, um, a company that was building a battery plant in Hopkinsville, um, they're one of the 20 companies that had won, uh, some of the preliminary grants totaling 2.8 billion, um, to boost the, the domestic manufacturing of batteries for electric vehicles. And this company is building a plant in, in Hopkinsville. And abruptly, the Department of Energy had cut off talks. Um, and one of the reasons, uh, might be due to the firm having improper ties to China. Uh, they cut off the $200 million loan, uh, after some congressional Republicans argued the firm is tied to China. Now, this is, uh, not a new thing for these Now this is, uh, not a new thing for these battery plants. Let us rewind to a battery plant now being built in Michigan that was originally planned for Virginia. It was another Ford battery plant. Um, they were partnering with now a different company than the battery plant that Ford is building here in Kentucky. Um, but this battery plant that Ford was building in Virginia, Virginia Governor Yonkin turned down, shocking a lot of people, but why? Because he said it had improper ties to China. And then that battery plant ends up going to Michigan where their liberal governor said, yeah, okay. Um, and decided to go ahead and take that on. Um, so it is, it is unclear. So this, this, they were paying them out, um, millions of dollars. So they're supposed to invest around, it was supposed to be about a $504 million investment of, of building that they were doing, that this company was doing. Um, and Kentucky was giving them about 21 million in economic incentives, including, that includes, uh, you know, some forgivable loans, um, some different grants, those kinds of things, uh, not unsimilar to the over half a billion dollars that they, uh, awarded to the Ford battery plant here in Kentucky. It does make you ask questions because remember that Ford battery plant here in Kentucky, Beshear has already given them $250 million cash upfront. Um, you wonder if they're dependent upon anymore of these pending issues too, because like I just brought up, uh, it's not exactly like Ford battery plants don't have a tendency to also be in bed with China. But this, this company, uh, that's putting up the location, it has, uh, locations in Florida, Colorado, and it's got locations in China, England and Germany. Um, once again, is, is, is it tied in? See, when you do business in China, um, in order to do business in China, you are submitting to the will of the CCP, the communist, uh, Chinese Communist Party. And that they're coming, if they want to see your books, if they want to see your information, if they want to influence what you're doing, if you want to be able to continue to operate, you have to let them do that. That's why any company that has locations in China has got to be looked at closely. Of course, uh, that didn't happen with the battery plant project for Ford here in Kentucky. That, uh, company SK, which is a South Korean company, has, uh, several locations in China as well. Um, but putting that to the side, so this, they lose this $200 million grant and now they want more information about why the federal government decided to turn it down. Um, you know, it, it, it leaves us some questions about whether it's going to continue. Um, but also as well, the incentives that, that our state was providing are performance based. Um, so there hasn't been any issued funding yet, but basically in order to get our money, they were supposed to be hitting certain viewpoints. So, uh, the US Department of Energy was the one in charge of putting out the grant. They, I guess, were the ones who caught it. Um, once again, this does ask some questions too as well about in general, if we, in general, about using taxpayer funds in this way. Uh, and what I mean by that is, is that the Department of Energy handing out this money, us handing out tens of millions of dollars, uh, to these companies. And meanwhile, we're even having to ask the question, are they tied to China? This just continues to leave people questioning about China's ties. How much, how much does China, uh, have controls over? It's something to be aware of. Um, a lot of people have been concerned, um, concerned that the, the Chinese government and Chinese companies like, uh, some of the ones we've talked about here, buying up land in America. In fact, Richard Heath, who ran for agriculture commissioner, had a bill, um, it moved a little bit in committee. We'll see if it ends up getting passed, uh, this next session, but it was a bill to ban China from being able to own land in Kentucky. Uh, those types of bills we're seeing move forward, but we're also seeing, uh, issues regarding other companies pooling in some money, dealing with, um, dealing with their ties to Chinese companies. And it's where this comes from, some of this comes from, so the US Energy Secretary, um, why they abruptly denied it in a May 1st letter, she said it was because, uh, they bragged to Chinese media about Microvast's strong ties to the People's Republic of China. Um, and, and that certainly, uh, isn't a good look. And in a position where we're trying to break away from the control of China, we're trying to, we've got Taiwanese issues, we've got issues of raw materials, we are in a technology race with China to a degree. In that situations like that, having these companies and one here in Kentucky that is, is, is coming out and saying, look, they have strong ties to Chinese, uh, the Republic of China. Yeah, that's of some concern. Now, Microvast says, look, we've got plants in Tennessee, we've got plants all over, we're a US citizen, uh, you don't need to worry about us, we will, this isn't true, we've got nothing to do with it. Look, it is, it is important that we remain vigilant and, and watching all of these types of investments we're making. Um, and by we're making, I mean, we're being forced to make because of course, our state is coming in, um, and confiscating our money through taxation. Uh, if, if you don't think they are, if you don't think they're taking it through force, through confiscation, try not paying your taxes, see what happens. Somebody will show up at your door demanding you pay them and then they're re-appropriating these funds and handing them out to private companies and in this way of government investing. Now, Republicans in the Republican Party platform states that we're supposed to believe that government doesn't create economic opportunities, but can only hinder them. But a lot of actions we're seeing out of Republicans, including taking votes to approve these kinds of incentives, doesn't act that way. We also in our Republican Party platform are supposed to state that we believe, uh, that government shouldn't be picking and choosing winners and losers. But when you look at what we see Republican legislature doing, that's exactly what they're doing here. They're picking and choosing winners and losers. What I would love to see, and this is why I'd love to see, uh, in this governor's race going forward too, is a governor to talk about how government can get out of the way of companies, um, so that way they can grow and expand, uh, without having to quote unquote create jobs by spending tens of millions of dollars of taxpayer funds and risking tens of millions of dollars like they have in this situation to going to Chinese companies. Keep in mind too, uh, it wasn't the state of Kentucky that discovered this. It was the Department of Energy. If the Department of Energy didn't say anything, tens of millions of our dollars would possibly going to a Chinese controlled company without any oversight. It is certainly a big question to be asked. Also too as well, in this economic situation, where we have more people looking for jobs than we have jobs. And I understand certain areas obviously, uh, don't have as many jobs as other areas and that's a deeper conversation. But the question is, should we even be taking tens of millions of taxpayer funds like we have been and forcing the, the Kentucky taxpayer to be investing in these companies in the first place? I certainly am, am very personally alarmed by some of these things that we've been seeing. Now, then again, I'm a small business owner myself and I just want to see a government that, uh, promulgates regulations that helps small business owners thrive, uh, without having to confiscate all of our, uh, funds and then giving them to the Fortune 100 and 500 companies, um, that waggle a little carrot of several hundred jobs and causes our governments to jump through hoops, including possibly giving tens of millions of dollars to, once again, a possible, uh, China, a company with deep ties to China. Well, that's what we have time for today on the Andrew Cooper Editor Show. Thank you so much y'all for joining us. Um, we are your source for Kentucky and local level political news and talk with a constitutional and conservative focus. Thank you all so much and have a great rest of your day.